Of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty. All public meetings are being conducted remotely. To participate remotely from a computer, please use the link that is listed in our posted agenda, or you may call in by telephone using the number that is also listed on our agenda, which is posted on the town of Ashland website. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order. I, John Trefethan, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present.
I, Brian Forrestall, am present.
Okay, on the agenda this evening, the first order of business is we have a special permit application and a public hearing for fourteen Bartlett Road. We have meeting minutes from our December twenty eighth, twenty twenty one meeting to review and approve. And last but not least, we have staff updates and administrative matters. All that being said, I will read the notice for the special permit public hearing. The notice reads as follows, the Ashland zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two at seven P M. Be resumed. Video conference meeting accessed via, and then there's a bunch of indecipherable letters. To hear the petition of Adam and Julie Bobola, and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, requesting a special permit for chapter forty A, section ten of the Massachusetts zoning act and chapter two eighty-two, sections three point three, parenthesis, nonconforming uses and structures, close parenthesis, and nine point three, parenthesis, special permits, close parenthesis, of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of an addition on a preexisting nonconforming structure which encroaches on the northerly side yard setbacks and front yard setback. The application is applying to building a second story addition on current single story ranch style home. The property in question is located at fourteen Bartlett Road, assesses map twenty-four, lot one oh seven in the residential A zoning district. Parties wishing to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. And materials may be viewed on the town website for more information or to submit public comment. You could contact our planning director. All that being said, welcome to the applicants and did I mispronounce your last name? I hope not, but there's a distinct possibility I did.
It's Bobola, but that's close enough.
Bobola, okay, well, with the last name of Trefethan, if it's close enough. Let me just explain a little bit about the process for the public hearing this evening. We have three members of the zoning board of appeals present, two members and one associate member. We asked the applicant to address first and tell us what what it is you you wish to do, what what you're seeking. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions. When that is completed, we will open it up to the public for any public comments or questions. And then depending upon how long all of that takes, the members may discuss some initial thoughts on the on the process and on what is before us today. That being said, we have all had an opportunity to review the matters that were submitted to the planning department and which have been posted online. So I will turn that over to you and why don't you tell us what it is you're looking to do and what relief you would like to receive from the Z B A.
Yeah, absolutely. So thanks for having us in in hearing out our proposal. Basically, we moved here in two thousand and eighteen. As a family, we had a child who's little under one. And now we're looking to expand our family. And in doing so, the two bed, one and a half bath ranch that we purchased, we're just looking to expand it in size to accommodate for the growing family. So what we're looking to do is we're looking to put on a second floor. That's going to be going directly on top of the current existing first floor. And it, as you know, was documented, it's breaching the the side perimeter requirements and in the front. But we're just looking to, like I said, to put it to put on a second floor and kind of grow our family. I don't know if anyone has any questions for the specifics or anything like that.
Well, before we we open it up, once again, we are we are dealing with a nonconforming structure where the owner is seeking to make an addition or structural change, so we will be dealing with section three point three point five, as well as section nine point three of the zoning bylaws. If you don't have anything further that you want to present at this point in time, why don't we turn it over to questions from the board? And Brian, why don't we start with you?
I don't have any questions. It looks pretty straightforward, like you're just going to put an addition on top of the existing home. Doesn't seem any more detrimental to me to go up in height a little bit. And I can't wait to hear from the public, see if anyone is complaining about it, but I hope not. That's all I got.
Stu, how about for you?
Okay. My understanding is that the footprint of the structure stays the same. And we're just putting on the second story. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So with that in mind, as Brian has mentioned, it's a pretty straightforward case, and I don't have any further questions.
Okay, I have just just a few. Obviously, the the preexisting nonconformity on the side yard, which the bylaws require a ten foot side yard and you're a little bit over five feet. I went out, looked at the property today, and obviously, the entire neighborhood is quite, each property is quite close to each other. A number of the homes look like they they have a a second story, as it were, added on. And in fact, I think the property on each side of yours is a two story property and you're sort of the little guy in the in the middle there. Have you discussed what you're proposing to do with any of your neighbors?
Yeah, yeah, we approached all of our neighbors, obviously, the ones on both sides, you know, that directly butt to our property, but everyone on the street as well. And oddly enough, the the Heps, who are neighbors on the other side, their house was a a single story ranch, similar to ours before they did the same addition and built up.
Okay, so you've spoken to the people and I guess it would be sixteen Bartlett and they have no opposition to the slightly increased elevation that will be next door to them?
Yeah, we spoke with Tony and Laura, and they didn't have any issue. As a matter of fact, maybe when you saw the property, there was a a tree that is technically on their side, but kind of comes over our property. Probably two thirds of the tree. And so we were just talking about if we did decide to go up, you know, we probably have to take that down and you know, discussing what the logistics would be of that.
Okay. Now, if we if we vote to to approve the special permit, we have in our hearing decision, we have to make certain certain findings. And as Brian alluded to in in one of his questions, we have to make a determination that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. And as both Brian and Stuart have indicated, staying within the, you know, the boundaries of the existing roof would seem to not increase anything. I notice on the plan that was submitted as part of the application that the height of the new structure would be, what is it, twenty-five point two feet? And the present height is sixteen point two feet, so that wouldn't seem to be much higher to cause any particular problems. We also have to make the number of findings that we need to get and we will we will take that under advisement. Okay, moving along, we have to make six specific findings and we just need to have a little bit of evidence in the in the record so that we can make the appropriate findings. So what I'm going to do, if there's no objection, is I'm just going to go over the items and perhaps lead you to some of the information so that we can have the necessary findings. The first one is that community needs served by the proposal. And a typical finding is that if it allows a family to continue to live in Ashland with more space for a developing family, that certainly meets a community need. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. There's no change in any of the in your plan for any of the traffic. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. Have town water and town sewer, I'm assuming. Okay. Neighborhood character and social structures. I think I may have mentioned it, but you did as well is that it's sort of a closely knit residential neighborhood with a number of one, one and a half, or two story ranch styled homes, I think would adequately describe it. Impacts on the natural environment. You mentioned the tree that may may have to to be trimmed, but other than that, any impacts on the natural environment that you would expect? Would think not. And then finally, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base and employment. Typically, an extension like this would be very little impact on town services, slight increase in the town tax base and providing for temporary employment for construction for a period of time, probably for an architect, hopefully a local architect who might be doing your architectural drawings, et cetera. Any additional impact, the fiscal impact that you folks feel your proposal would would have? That's enough. Okay. Okay, thank you. Excellent. Brian or Stu, any other thoughts on findings that we would we would make if we decide to grant the special permit?
No, looks pretty straightforward.
None here, sir.
Okay, I my memory is fading now. Did I I already asked for public comment, didn't I? And nobody, nobody spoke up? Okay, good.
John, you you didn't ask for public comment yet.
I didn't.
No.
Public comment, anyone here? I see one of our regular public attendees at the meeting who oftentimes does comment. We're opening it up for public comments, so if anyone wants to be heard, please speak now.
I was waiting to have my name being told, saying it was okay to speak up before we spoke.
Oh, sorry, Mark. You know, the the drill, just please identify yourself, name and address, and then speak your piece.
Part of Sony, four nine Hawthorne Road. A regular here and understand that the growing family that needs an extra floor, which is a good thing. That's just one of the ask about the height. Is it going to be? It's going to be called by the Ashland bylaw height, what that number is, because when you have twenty-five and sixteen, it's a little over the bylaw height.
I know the the existing height is sixteen feet. And with the addition, the total height would be twenty-five feet, which is below the thirty-five foot.
Twenty-five and sixteen?
No, it's sixteen feet is the size with the existing building. Once you add the second floor to it, the total height will be twenty-five feet.
So it's got to be nine.
So it's it's an additional nine feet, basically.
Okay, I understand that. I thought it was the bottom was sixteen and the top's got to be at this way. Okay. Which would have been a little bit higher, but that was my my only question. I just wanted to make sure and where the way I hear the in the background, it might be a part time uncle or nanny pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other public, public comments or questions? Going once, going twice. Okay, we will close the public comment section of the meeting. And Mr. and Mrs. Bobola, anything further you want to say before the board begins to discuss the matter?
Just thank you for your consideration.
You're very welcome. Okay, sitting on the hearing will be Brian Forrestall, our associate member Stuart Siego, and myself, John Trefethan. This would seem fairly straightforward to me. To me, gentlemen, I think you both indicated right at the very beginning. It seems like something we should we should grant. The facts seem fairly straightforward. And, you know, once again, it's you know, dealing with a a neighborhood where many of the homes are in lots that don't meet the current zoning requirement, so we're dealing with nonconforming structures or again, that's what we're here for. I would suggest that we ask Emma to draft a decision for us to consider at our next meeting consistent with the facts that were elicited in tonight's hearing with the appropriate findings that we need to make in order to grant the special permit. Does that meet with your approval, Brian and Stu?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay. Then, Emma, would you be kind enough to draft the decision in accordance with our discussion this evening so that we can review it and vote to approve it at our next meeting, which will be January twenty-fifth, I believe? Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Bobola, let me just explain a little bit about the process that's going to happen. We have discussed the matter and have determined that it's appropriate to grant a special permit. We have to approve a written decision which Emma Snellings, our assistant town planner, will will draft and which we will undertake at our next meeting, which is scheduled for two weeks from tonight, January twenty-fifth. At that time, assuming there are no problems and that we would not expect there to be any problems, we will vote to approve the special permit. The decision will then have to be signed and filed with the town clerk. And the there's then a twenty day waiting period for anyone to appeal the decision if they should choose to do so. And once that twenty day period is over, the special permit decision can be filed with the registry of deeds and you will be good to go. But what we will do now is we entertain a motion to continue tonight's hearing. We can't close the hearing until we are ready to vote to approve the the hearing decision. Okay, any questions about all of that?
No, I don't think we have anything at this time.
Sounds like he's happy. That's good. I I would hate to have not decided to grant the special permit. We we might have had an insurrection on our hands. Would Brian or Stu, would someone like to make a motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, January twenty-fifth at seven P M.?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes this matter for this evening. And going on to the next item of our agenda, it is the review and approval of minutes from our December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one board meeting. Emma had prepared a draft and sent the draft out to us last week. Emma, did you receive any changes or corrections?
I did not receive any edits, no.
Okay, that's a better way to say it, edits, yes. Okay, any discussion, Brian or Stuart? If not, a motion to approve the minutes from the December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Stu. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, we are next on to our last item on the agenda, which is staff updates and administrative matters. Emma, any staff updates or administrative matters before we talk to our next invited guest?
No, I have no updates tonight.
Okay. Okay, moving on then. We have had two talent bank forms submitted to the select board by people expressing an interest in interest in possibly joining the zoning board of appeals as an associate member. You may recall that at our last meeting, Sunday, Wiley observed the meeting and asked some questions and wanted to observe another meeting. Unfortunately, she does not appear to be here this evening. And we also had a talent bank form that was submitted by Anton Takoma Takomoroff. And everyone has had an opportunity to review that talent bank form and Anton was able to join us tonight and is is here. And welcome. I think we welcomed you before the actual start of the meeting, but we'll formally welcome you so that everybody, you know, everybody watching on WAC, all of the town of Ashland will will know that you are here. Let me perhaps just explain a little bit about about us. We are a quasi judicial body, as you may know. We are a three member board. We have three members. And the bylaws allow for for associate members who fill in at any time when one of the three members is not able to vote on a matter. The associate members fully participate in the hearings, ask questions, et cetera, but get to vote when there was a one of our regular full time members was not not at the meeting, such as what Stu did this evening. The select board in recent years has asked that people who have expressed an interest in joining us observed one or two meetings to get a sense about what takes place and what what things, how things are done, ask any questions, et cetera. And if you express an interest after all of that to and we haven't scared you away after the meeting tonight, that we can then discuss it and write a letter of recommendation to the select board, who is the ultimate appointing authority for all associate members. I think that's all the the background that we have to do. At the moment, we have three members and one associate member. Stu is an associate member and he, you know, stepped in tonight and is going to be a voting member on the hearing decision because our a third member was not able to be here this evening. Anton, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? We we have seen and reviewed your talent bank bank form and I will turn the matter over to you to ask any questions, tell us about yourself a little bit or whatever you'd like to say.
Sure. So as you guys probably saw on my talent bank form, my name's Anton Takomorov. I am an attorney as of fairly recently. I graduated law school in two thousand and twenty and I've been working for a little bit over a year. My practice focuses just entirely on commercial real estate. So I do a variety of things kind of in that role, including primarily acquisitions, dispositions, financings. But I do also get involved in certain land use matters, kind of reviewing zoning in various cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth and you know, a variety of things like that. And I expect as my career progresses, I'm going to be more involved in land use and development. So I was, I've moved to Ashland very recently. I grew up in Acton, which is kind of out by Lexington and Concord, is usually what I say. Went to undergrad at UMass, lived in Boston for a couple of years, and then my fiance and I just purchased a house here at in Oak Street in Ashland. So, you know, once I I always wanted to get involved in local government, but I've always been a little bit too, you know, never really attached enough to a place to for it to really make sense. So as soon as I kind of, you know, I'm here, I'm going to be here. I live here. I wanted to find something that I could do and find a way I could get involved. I saw that you guys had an opening, so that's how I submitted my form and here I am.
Excellent. Brian or Stu, any questions for Anton?
I don't have any questions, but with a background like that, I hope you find this an appealing board to join.
Of course.
Agreed. Stu, any questions?
Likewise, it it seems that the the C B A would be of interest to you, Anton, and we're happy to see your interest in joining.
I would, I would say ditto to both of those comments. Obviously, your your legal background is perfect for, you know, for what we do. One thing I neglected to say is that we do meet on the second Tuesday of each month. And if we have business that isn't concluded on the second Tuesday meeting, such as the hearing tonight, we meet on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Most months, we end up meeting on the fourth Tuesday, but at times, if there is nothing pending before us, then we we don't even meet on the second Tuesday. But I think we were all sort of expecting that as things sort of have opened up in the economy, that we will probably be seeing a steady stream of of applications. So is this something you think you would like you would like to do and join us?
I do. I very much, you know, I think that my particular kind of experience lends itself to this particular board and it's it's definitely something I'd be interested in.
Excellent. Brian and Stu, you know, this is always the embarrassing part because we're we're talking in front of Anton about a recommendation, but based based on all of our comments, I think it would be fair to say I I can write a a letter to the select board indicating our recommendation that that they appoint Anton to as an associate member of the CBA.
Yeah, I agree. That'd be great.
Okay, then then that will, that I will do this week. I will forward letters to you or copies, rather, of the email to you. Anton, I know in the past, the select board has asked the the candidate to attend one of their meetings where they where they appoint or have the opportunity to ask questions before appointing. I'm not sure whether they still do that or not. Emma, do you know?
I believe they do, but I'm sure Susan Roby will be in touch.
Exactly. Okay, then that's what we will, that's what we will do and I should be able to get that email to the select board no later than the end of the end of this week. Excellent. Well, if there are no other questions on this subject and Emma, we have no other staff updates or administrative matters?
No, there are no pending applications at this time, so no updates.
Okay. That being said, then is someone going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn.
I second that motion.
I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Thank you and thank you, WACCA.
Till next time.
Take care, everyone.
Recording stopped.
The recording has stopped.